We'll take a roll call for the open workshop, January 31st. It is 5:40 PM. Trustee Alonso is here, trustee Cruden is here, trustee Desmond is here, trustee Finnery is here, trustee Munoz is here, trustee Valado is here, vice president Walback is not here yet, and president Broderick is here. At this time, I'd like to change the order, and I'm going to ask the superintendent to go first, and then I'll follow up with whatever resolutions we weren't able to do at committee. So I'll turn the meeting over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Maida. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
At this month's leadership team meeting, I had two presenters. One was David Nash Esquire. He's a director of legal services, and also he is a chief counsel for NJPSA. Also Adam Drew of the New Jersey State Police, and he's also the CEO of Three Corners Law and Sports. They reviewed the laws and consequences involved regarding front row reporting of incidents that occur in schools. This information will now be turnkeyed with all staff by the principals and directors. One of our district goals is to reduce the number of students that are chronically absent. Unfortunately, half of our schools are rated as needing improvement in the area of chronic absenteeism. This category, group schools that have students who are absent 10% of the year, so that equates to basically 18 days a school year. So as part of the quest to reach this goal, I participated in a free NJ DOE webinar entitled, "Creating a Warm and Engaging School Climate to Support Attendance." Additionally, I have been meeting individually with principals to develop strategies to address this concern specific to their schools. I also had Mr. DeLucio, our business consultant, in to review the current status of our payroll incumbences and to complete the current staff budget for next year. Mr. Matt Bolden is working to develop a salary incumbent projection report that will forecast our contractual salary obligations through June 30th. Mr. Nick Cormish of the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office Security Planning Unit visited the Bayonne School District on January 24th of this month. He conducted a site visit to assess and evaluate school safety protocols. Mr. Lopez went on the visit and will now share more details of his findings. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Dr. Wonko. Every month in all of our 11 elementary schools, along with Bayonne High School, we run two fire drills. School safety teams meet and also run a variety of school safety drills such as active shooter, lockdown, bomb threat, shelter in place, non-fire evacuation, and bus evacuation drills. After each drill, school safety teams will self-reflect, evaluate the drill, and send out reports to central work. As Dr. Wonko stated, Nick Cormish from the Prosecutor's Office is a leader in school security, not only in Hudson County but throughout the state. Mr. Cormish visited the Bayonne School District to conduct a site visit at Henry Harris and John Bailey Schools to evaluate school safety protocols and did an assessment of a lockdown drill at both locations. Mr. Cormish asked principal Casimir and principal McCormick to call available teachers to the office, and the teachers took part in evaluating the drill, which was nice because usually our teachers are in lockdown with the students. So we had some teachers that were prepped and volunteered their time, so instead of them being in, they locked down behind closed doors, they were in a hallway, and they really came up with some great ideas and gave great feedback, and we received some wonderful suggestions from them that principal Casimir and principal McCormick have put in place moving forward. The drills ran smoothly, they did excellent job, students and staff, and Mr. Cormish commended both principals and his staff for a job well done. Mr. Cormish will also be back in district to make school security presentations during faculty meetings, and will also be making a school safety presentation to our leadership team coming up in the next month. As always, we thank and value our relationship with the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office, and especially Mr. Cormish for coming in and not only giving us assessments and evaluations, but giving us presentations and sharing best practices throughout the state with us. Kudos to them, and kudos to John and Bailey School and Henry Harris for, you know, a job well done. Thank you, Doc.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Yesterday, I received approval from the executive county superintendent for preschool classroom size waivers in seven locations. That would equate to 12 classrooms. Mr. Smith will share some more information on the PEEA grant and the expansion of the extended feeding program, but additionally, he will also discuss the removal and possible reinstallation of the solar panels and roofing projects. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Dr. Wonko. Good evening, everybody. As Dr. Wonko said, the executive county superintendent, excuse me, Ms. Pierce sent up to us the waiver for 12 additional preschool rooms for the 2017-2018 school year. So we are now in compliance size-wise for all of our rooms. We will have to resubmit that waiver in the summer depending on if funding becomes available again for this program. We're hoping that it will be part of Governor, new Governor Murphy's initiative. He pushed back his budget hearing date to mid-March, so we will not get our numbers until sometime after that, but we are hopeful that this fantastic initiative with the preschool children can continue. If you do get a chance, stop into one of them and see what's going on. It'll really enlighten you and make you feel good about what we do. The feeding program, we are now in nine of our 11 schools. We're feeding on the extended feeding program over the weekends and long holiday weekends and breaks. We have just under 200 students. Those names are gathered from the master eligibility list with input from guidance counselor, teacher, principals, and assistant principals, and those students get to take home a pack of food product over the weekend because we know they're probably not getting the nutritional needs that they need over those weekends. By February 9th, we will also be in number Resco School, number 14, and the last one that we'll hit will be number 8 School. So hopefully by the end of February, we'll have all of our schools covered by the extended feeding program. And a real shout-out to Anissa Detto in our food services department, who has been spearheading this on our behalf and touching all the bases and getting things going. As you know, every Thursday, we send our trucks out to the New Jersey Food Bank, and they provide us with the product as well as donations from our selected vendors that come in, so we're able to feed those students. Next Wednesday at our facilities meeting, I have an energy consultant, Mike Mastropaska, coming in. He was a integral part of when we did our last energy survey, and throughout the grammar schools, we changed out lighting at little or no cost to the district. He's going to give us an update on what grants and possible programs are out there, so we may be able to update the solar. Right now, if we weren't, the two roof projects that we're going to do, the main building at Bayonne High School and Washington School, if we were to take those solar pa, well, when we do the roof, and you'll see those two resolutions in the agenda tonight, two roofing projects, and those are through the Rock Grenets, if, when we take those solar panels off, if we put them back up, the cost would almost be a break even. So we're looking to maybe replace with new, and we're trying to see what programs are out there that will give the district its best bang for the dollar, so to speak. So we're interested in hearing from Mike. He's going to come in next week. We've worked with him before in the district, and he's done a fabulous job. I have two other smaller items. Today, in district, we sent out over 2,000 W-2 forms, half electronically, and the other delivered to the buildings, so we saved on that mailing cost. Just so you know, employees have the option of opting in to get it electronically through the Docu-Livery system. It's the same way they can see their paychecks. By opting in, they can pull up their W-2 anytime that they may need it, but some people still like that hard paper copy. Remember years ago, it was the rip-off with the carbon paper between it and so that. And also with the change in the tax tables. Tax tables were changed in mid-December, and employees yesterday reaped that little benefit that most of the paid stubs in the district went up. They went to different tax tables, and we didn't hear any complaints. Naturally, when people get a little more money, we don't hear complaints. It's when they're short that we'll get the phone calls. So we just got one phone call, and we did send a memo out last week alerting the staff that this was on the horizon, and so it started yesterday in the Bayonne School District with the January 30th payroll, and we were able to get that done, and that was through our payroll services here. And that's all I have, Dr. Wonko. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. At this point, I would like Dr. Degnan to address the following four areas. First, the Board of Education Curriculum Committee began a discussion regarding promotion and retention in the elementary schools, grades 4 through 8. Second, this Friday, we'll be conducting our third training day for staff. Third, I shared a letter to parents and the community about the performance reports released and how to access the reports. And finally, one of my objectives is to have a tentative schedule for high school students when they leave for the summer. After, excuse me, as well, flu is going around everywhere. Part of the process is to have a program of study book in place. The book is now complete and is of best practice. Dr. Degnan will now explain, expand on these four items.
Thank you, Dr. Wonko. Good evening, honorable members of Board of Education. Dr. Gary Maida is handing out our program and study book, and we did share that with you, but again, the program of studies contains a description of courses offered in the 2018-19 academic year. It also includes information about graduation requirements, course selection, guidelines for entrance and withdrawal from courses, standards for special class placement, our athletic eligibility rules, and also the college admission requirements. The guides department strives to make all college and career ready. Students are considered college career-ready when they have the knowledge and academic preparation needed to enroll and succeed without the need for remediation in introductory college credit-bearing courses. The same attributes and levels of achievement are needed for entering into and success in the post-secondary workforce, the military, or directly in jobs that offer gateful employment and career advancement. Students, teachers, counselors, and parents will become familiar with this information and will consult with the school counselor to develop an appropriate academic program. And I'd like to thank Dr. Wonko, the directors, and of course, our director of student personnel services, Ms. Bush, for helping with this task and getting this in place. For a while, we did have all these things, but we didn't have it in one concise book, so now it'll be available, and we'll hand it out to our page reader hard copy, but it'll be available digitally on the website. Additionally, the New Jersey Performance Reports. New Jersey School Performance Reports provide families, educators, and the public valuable information about how a school is doing and how the school is preparing students for success after high school. As part of New Jersey's accountability system, the performance reports provide a picture of overall school performance. These reports include data on chronic absenteeism, participation in college readiness tests, and taking rigorous coursework in high school. The school community can use this information to prepare a school's performance for other schools, districts, and statewide results, and to find a school's strengths and identify areas for improvement. The reports also reflect the focus on how a school is approving for the inclusion of longitudinal and growth data. Additionally, New Jersey has developed a school accountability system as required by every Student Succeeds Act to identify schools in need of support. Beginning with the 1617 reports, data is included to demonstrate how schools and districts are performing against the state's accountability standards. So what you'll see with the performance reports, I know Dr. Wonko shared a letter with the public and with the parents, so they could go in and access these reports, there's a detail and a summary, there's a dashboard, and then there's a full report that looks at growth and demographic variables, and it's very detailed. We did talk about this in the curriculum committee, about the hidden scores that were in the reports, and then you can find them, and we had a conversation about this is the first year that they did something like that. So it's like an A through F scale that you would have, but what you want to do is really look at the details in the report because it's about 39 pages long. How will we use this? We will use this to find out, in our schools, are our students on track for success? How much students are learning based on the MSGP? In our high school, are our students graduating? And if they are graduation, are they going on to college? There is also a special part about this, that these reports can be translated into Spanish for our Hispanic population. We also began a conversation about promotion retention and looking at the policy in the curriculum specifically in grades 4 to 8, and just to bring the members of the board, major subjects in grades 4 to 8 are English language arts, math, science, and social studies, and presently, a student failing two or more major subjects will be retained in grade. The curriculum committee asked me to look at the policy because the concern was if a student fails math, they should fail math in grades 4 to 8 and still be moved on to the next grade levels. So we wanted to begin the conversation here out in public and let you know that we are starting to review that policy. Our next step is to go back and look at the options that we could put on the table, and there will be a few that we start to look at, and possibly even look at attendance, and also the possibility of a summer school requirement or an after-school mandatory requirement for students that are not successful in math and or language arts. So we are in the beginning stages, but we'd like to move forward till we have something, if we are going to do this, ready for September for the 17, for the 18, 19 school year. And then finally, we have our abbreviated staff training day on Friday. We're excited again that we could have Mr. Scott in. Mr. Scott has a relationship with New Jersey School Districts, both public and private, offering professional development training. His work as a coordinator with the New Jersey Traumatic Arts Coalition, as part of Rutgers University Healthcare, as a family therapist, supports this effort to provide suicide awareness and prevention training for school staff. Mr. Scott will be in to meet with all of our high school teachers on Friday morning in 8:30 to 10 o'clock session, and I'm going to share with you what we also have available for our elementary staff, which is very specific. We have Introduction to Next Generation Science Standards, modeling mathematics, novel assessments, and even our counselors have investigated it claims. So there was a lot going on in the curriculum committee, and I thank them for their.
Thank you, Dr. Degnan. That concludes my report. Are there any questions? If not, I'd like to turn, yes?
With the school's performance reports, those numbers, I admit they're raw data, but they weren't really encouraging. Is there going to be a district-wide assessment as to how we're approaching these things? I mean, we're really not in the top half of the state according to those numbers.
That's correct, and yes, there is a district initiative, and we are doing this with the leadership team. In fact, I think the next meeting is the strategic plan we're going over that addresses some of these as well as the district goals. That will be at the following leadership team meeting.
That is correct. We have a plan in place. We have a strategic plan that we put in place in October. Chronic absenteeism was on the radar. Now it did come out. Some of the things that they do have in the reports, like participation on the course, that was out of our control. They said that students could refuse the test, or not opt out, but refuse, so we made a big push to get them to take the test. Chronic absenteeism, a lot of the concerns, we talked about this in the curriculum committee, with chronic absenteeism in the early grades. Why? Because the parents don't get them. So we have, I've been working with the principals and the directors on the strategic plan. We're working with Dr. Wonko to show you some of the action steps that we have in place.
Also, trustee Ryan, I think when we met with the curriculum group, part of our, we realized, part of these problems is going back to what we were talking about, the retention type of situation. You know, we were discussing, a child could literally fail math, say, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, same year, you know, and how are they ever going to pass these kind of tests? So this is why this has to really be looked at for their sake. I may be to even, I may take social studies and not do very well in, you know, American history, and bet I could do well on world history or something, you know, but if I don't, in math, if I'm not up to par, it's just going to grow, you know, and so I think it's something that's, something very big we have to look at right now.
Yeah, we were at curriculum, we were talking about doing earlier intervention in the lower grades, having mandatory after-school tutorials and whatever, stepping in and getting these kids very young in grades 2 and 3 before they start to lose everything.
Are we looking at how our inclusion students are being brought into there? Because they're right on the bubble. They could make a big, a small population could make a huge difference in our macro numbers, and we had to make cuts all across the board last year. I want to protect them too.
I know. We have to look at them as well.
I have to say, the curriculum committee met. It was almost three hours of discussion, and they did come up with some great suggestions. And one of the areas that we were looking at closely is what the president Broderick spoke about, mathematics. If you failed that year, you're behind the next year and so on. So that's why we brought this up at this meeting, because we don't want anybody to be blindsided at the beginning of next year when a policy is in place that might impact retention.
That is going to be my comment to Dr. Degnan as well as you. Timeliness is very, very important, I think. Being forewarned is forearmed. If we can perhaps at this point inform parents as well as students, if you do not succeed this year, this is what's going to happen next year, and maybe it might just be the spark. It might take somebody who's like a 65, a 68 to get them to work a little bit harder and to go to those, we're offering classes right now, are we not, Dr. Degnan?
We're offering them now, but what the committee was discussing is to make these mandated and to have consequences if you do not attend them, and that people know upfront, as you just said, that if they do not do well in the course, they have to take this remedial course. If they do still fail the course, then they're going to have to go to a summer program. And again, that's why we started this evening, so that the people will become aware that this is coming down the pike.
No, that's, that's all I'm saying, that people may, they have to be made aware, especially the students. A lot of them tend to say, oh, it's okay, I'll go into 6th grade next year, I don't really need to pass math. No, if you don't pass math in the 5th grade, and they might be a 68 student, they might put in a little extra effort, and it might put them over that barrier, and they won't be failing in June if we let them know now.
Well, trustee Valado brought up what they do in her school system about the, why don't you explain it?
About the mandatory tutoring.
Yeah, the mandatory, yeah.
Yes, there's tutoring after school for students. This way, if they're at that cusp, there's a plan in place, the parent signs off, that they understand the child needs the tutoring after school. If not, then there's other consequences, which would be summer school or things, but that helps a lot of kids that aren't where you say, at that cusp, that just need that little extra help, and then they, they'll pass. Thank you.
And correcting it as soon as possible is always better, as opposed to even waiting to the summer. If we could get them in right now, like a progress report comes out, and, you know, the teachers, and I think the teachers would be more, you know, positive about sending people for help if they knew that there was some kind of policy behind it.
And it's also going to be a prescriptive type of help. It's not going to be you're going to tutoring and the tutor doesn't know what the child really needs. The teacher will be required to specifically say what the child needs help with, so that there's the feedback back and forth between the tutor and teacher.
That's about the focus and concentration I thought it was. It should help. Thanks, Greg.
Any other questions? I would like to turn it back to Dr. Maida.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Wonko? Just some housekeeping. The revised copy of the committee schedules. What we've decided is all the committee meetings will be held on the same day. Personnel will start at 1 o'clock. Curriculum will be 4:30. Finance will be 6 PM. So please make the adjustment, and any other calendar I've given you.
Do we have to chip in and get a cot for Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Let's get twin beds.
Thank you.
I'll tell you one thing I like about it, the fact that...
Yes, everything is going to be now on the Tuesdays.
I'll see everybody on the same day, so if we need to do straw polls or anything like that, I kind of run through everybody on the same day. So that much I like.
Once again, I want to make it known that we need to have like a summary, whether it's out here or inside, of what occurred at those meetings.
Well, I was going to do a summary of curriculum, but the superintendent did it in his email too.
He, he, John checked.
He did, he drafted everything, he did the curriculum.
Same thing happens with, Mr. Smith?
I would be very happy to have the committee chairs give the report.
Well, I was going to answer, I got your email, and everything we did, it was in the emails, I don't have to do it.
We'd be, we'd be very happy to do that.
Yeah, but you received the email, I did not. I don't think I did.
Yes, you did.
Did I? I guess I didn't read it.
Okay, well, I can't help but give it back.
You have to read it.
Next up, it's that time of year, you'll be seeing a thing from the state ethics on our board's ethics and disclosure forums. Any help you need, there's a follow-up that came from Laura. Any other instructions you need, please just call me and I'll help you get through it. So you'll be seeing this from school boards, I'm sorry, from the New Jersey Ethics Commission. As Dr. Degnan has said a few times, we have Q-SAC coming up. We had our reorg meeting the beginning of the month. I just want to give out as a reminder, in your ethics training packets, and I'd like to emphasize number one and two, and please ask the trustees to pay attention and make sure we all follow our rules, because Dr. Maida doesn't want to get less than a 99 this year on his governance report.
What do we have to do? Get 100?
And I, I don't know, I haven't tried. I did get 101 here, trustee, but then it was like a 99 and 98. But you don't want to have us, see us give away any points that we could get. Okay, so we'll start with the agenda. I'd like to make a note that there's an addition, well, I'll start with approval of minutes, acceptance communications. We have the December 19th meeting, and we have our reorg meeting on the 9th. There's an addition, well, actually, there are a few additions that you might not have seen. Mr. D'Angelo, there was a letter that came from him, I believe I did send that out to you folks.
Yes.
Also, Mr. Wyatt, and you'll see the attachment there. I suggested to Mr. Wyatt that possibly he could put whatever he wanted in writing, Ford could take a look at it, and possibly next month, one way or another, we could address it. The other thing is also Peter Allen, we have a resignation. He is a engineer, Ken, I believe. Custodian, okay? So that'll be in addition to communication that you don't have. Then we'll go to our consent agenda. We'll start with curriculum, curriculum committee met. I'll point out on resolution A9, one of our staff to attend workshop, I have to move that to non-consent, but I'm going to ask trustee Cruden and trustee Valado move and seconded the curriculum agenda. I'm going to ask you to also move and second A9 when I move that to the non-consent portion of the meeting. One of our trustees has a conflict and has to abstain from it, so I have to pull that. Okay, let's move to A15. It's a new resolution since the workshop, I'm sorry, since the committee meeting, and this was, last minute, we had approval for a field trip, and we hate to see the students not be able to attend. It's Bayonne High School, four students, the DECA program to Atlantic City, there is no course to the board, but it's February 17th. no course to the board, but it's February 27th and that will be before our February meeting, so that's why I'm giving it to you. And from the handout we gave out, the program of studies, there's a resolution, A16 is the resolution to go along with the packet that Dr. Dagnan talked about and we handed out. So those are the only two changes to our curriculum. And as I said, curriculum agenda was moved by trustee Cruden, was seconded by trustee Velado. Next up is finance and building grounds. Finance committee met. The agenda was moved by trustee Desmond and it was seconded by trustee Alonso, but I do need to go over, we'll start with A, I'm sorry, B2, acceptance of required reports. You've been given your board reports and also the secretary report. So we can now sign that resolution, you have all the reports that have to go with that. And...
Dr. Maida, I have a question.
Yes. If we can answer it.
Specifically on page 10 of the board report? Can I do that now?
Sure, it's just that I have to, not all the trustees may have it if they didn't bring it with them, because I did give it out at committee meetings, so some trustees, so maybe we could catch everybody up. And then, I don't have a copy for Mr. Smith though. Can I?
I'll get it.
Okay. Oh, no, wait, Laura, take this. Yeah.
Do you have any questions? Okay.
No, no, Mr. Ford's seconded report. Like I said, we gave it out at committee meetings, if you didn't bring it in, and I will, in the future, I'll make sure I have all nine copies.
If I go to my talk.
I thought I read this online as well.
We did, we did send it out.
Well, I read this online a few days ago. Should I ask a question now?
Yes.
It's just, on page 10 specifically, line, support services, general administration, which says, other purchased services. We appropriated 1,493, 271,000, and we spent 802,349. You see the line there?
Yeah.
11? What, I'm not understanding, maybe it's because I'm too, I like things to be very specific. What is other purchased services for like one and a half million dollars?
It's beyond the educational leagues, like student personnel services, real-time, it could include... Staff training and development. Staff training, as Laura said, is the electric auction in that also. The public service where we go out for an auction every year to get the best rate on our energy, is things of that nature that don't directly tie in to a educational program. And there's several budget lines that tie into that, I can get, can I speak or no? Yeah, can you get the sheet? There's a number of budget lines that tie into that one summary line. What we can do is get it for you and break it down for you, and I'll give you a list of that, you could see what was done where, okay? Will that help?
Well, yeah, well, it says other purchased services. I just don't know what other purchased services are.
There's a slew of other vendors for that, and as Mr. Smith said, it may be different real-time, different services that we offer, but I'll get a breakdown for you by individual budget line so that you can look at it a little bit more clearly, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Next up, B3, so that we took the draft off the resolution, but that can get signed now. I'm going to ask you to turn to B6, which we did at workshop, but it was a typo and we did correct it. We had the wrong year with January, so we made the correction. So I'll ask the trustees to re-sign it.
Do you want us to sign that on? Whoops.
Yeah, we'll get to it. I will ask you to turn to B11. The original, original resolution, had approval of RFP, after reviewing the submissions we had, this was an RFP we did for Student Information Systems back on December 14th. We analyzed, our professionals analyzed the data and made the decision that they were unacceptable and we would like to approve or to reject the RFP. And then there'll be some discussions on whether or not we go back out with a new RFP. I don't have the answer to that part of the question. So this resolution is to rescind the RFP that we did on December 14th, since it didn't fit in with what we were planning. Okay, B22, you'll see two of these, it is Dr. Paul Rizzo, he is a psychiatrist, he is providing two psychiatric evaluations on two non-classified students at $500 per evaluation.
Question? There's no medical coverage to accommodate part of that payment?
Agreed.
I mean, I don't even know if it's permitted under the circumstances.
What do you think?
Is medical coverage from, these are the student evaluations?
I know, but do the parents have insurance that pay for part of that? Does it go through medical insurance?
Right.
I know that's his rate, but what is the actual payment, which isn't on there? I mean, I know you do it for other things with Medicaid and so.
That's the rate that we pay.
But do you get reimbursed? If there's anything?
At this point, no. Something we could certainly look into if the parents have medical insurance. This is why we're going with Dr. Rizzo because of Dr. Dumont passed away suddenly.
No, he's very good, it's not that, it's, I mean, under the circumstances, it's a request from us for an evaluation, so I don't really know if it's available, I was just asking.
And if the parent...
It's not.
No, but it's not, they're non-classified students, so you might, you might be right, trustee, we'd have to look at it, because they're not classified, this is not a part of any IP.
Maybe you could check into it and get back to us on that, but if the parent doesn't want it and needs it...
It's a catch-22, and they need it, so.
So we'll look into that for the board and see if there's an opportunity for us to get reimbursed if there's private insurance. A20.
A or B?
B.
I can just hear the insurance company just flat out say, come on.
He said A, but it's...
Okay.
Very brave.
As Mr. Smith said, due to the death of our previous psychiatrist, as you saw in the previous resolution, what we'd like to do is have a resolution where we would be able to use him now for the rest of the school year and it'll still be $500 per evaluation.
Which would just be what?
This is B23.
21 and 3, okay. 22 and 3, I'm sorry.
I think I just mislabeled on Laura. B24, even though you've seen this name, it is a different resolution, Daniel De Silva, independent neurophysiological educational evaluation for a classified student.
It's very, very involved, it's very, yes. People with traumatic brain injuries and things like that have to have that done.
Now, trustee, this one is capped at $3,850 and anything over that would be the responsibility of the parent.
Having had to do it in person, like, it's very expensive and that's a pretty good price, missing with that insurance.
Okay, so that would be the finance. It was moved by trustee Desmond, it was seconded by trustee Alonso. I'll move on to C, personnel. C1, here's a revision, we'll do that inside. COPA, C6, monthly intimidation harassment report.
Thanks, Dr. Maida. In accordance with the Bayonne Board of Education Policy 5512, during this reporting period, six incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying have been reported and investigated at the following schools. One incident at Dr. Walter F. Robinson, one incident at Horace Mann, two incidents at Philip D. Room, and two incidents at Woodrow Wilson. In all six cases, there was no confirmed evidence of the investigated acts of HIV. Strategies, resources, and remedial measures were implemented. All documentation is being retained by the school anti-bullying coordinator.
All the other resolutions were done since home. I'll ask you to turn all the way to C17, which was an add-on, and this is the Bayonne Housing Authority Homework Program, Homework Assistance. You'll see an hourly rate of $9. We're adding a name to our, on the list. The consent agenda for personnel was moved by trustee Ryan and it was seconded by trustee Kennedy. Okay, moving along. Non-consent, if you remember, we're moving A9 to the beginning of our non-consent, and it was moved by trustee Cruden and seconded by trustee Velado. D1, D2, and D3, all for inside. Which brings us to D4. I guess I'll turn the floor over to trustee Alonso, since these are his resolutions. Unfortunately, I haven't been in this situation before, but I guess that's what I'll do. So trustee, you're up, we'll start with resolution D4.
Generally, these items would come from a committee. I mean, for transparency's sake, there should be discussion.
I thought that's what we need to do, that we're mediating and so that we can spend more time as individuals that a committee would need.
We do it for every...
How long did you spend on curriculum, trustee Cruden?
Three hours.
Three hours. So did this go to committee?
No, because of our first meeting, Dr. Maida reminded me that according to our bylaws, if you want to introduce a motion at a meeting, it has to first be brought up at a workshop. So this is the first step.
Without discussion with any other trustee?
No, no. The, as far as I know, the order would be, and you know, Mitch could clarify, or Mr. Clark, but a motion would be made, seconded, the discussion would start, and if a member felt like it should move to committee, another motion would be made for that to be referred to the committee. That would be the order.
Do you want to address that?
Yeah, currently, the way the bylaw reads is that any resolution that any trustee wants to present for a meeting would have to first be presented at the workshop. The language of it is very brief, it doesn't speak to informing other trustees before you present it at the workshop. Again, the bylaws can, you know, they go back to 1997, that's your bylaw, it hasn't been revised since, and that's currently the language of it.
It hasn't been revised, but it has been reviewed every year.
Trustees, can I interrupt for one second, I said from our last meeting, if, we really can't talk over each other because, my understanding is, we're just not being picked up. So I got to ask everybody to please just take a second, let someone finish, as I always say, go through the chair, and then the next person can have a turn, but when we're talking over each other, it's not getting picked up. Okay.
Sorry.
I have a question.
Trustee.
Microphone?
No. D3 is being tabled for inside, I'm wondering as to why.
It is a personnel matter?
Well, it's not a personnel matter because the person in question does not work for the Board of Education, so I don't see how this pertains.
I'll ask my lawyers to correct me if I'm wrong, but it is an appointment of a physician, those were always done in closed session.
Right. The appointments of professionals are discussed in closed session.
We can't hear you, Virginia, call.
It's not on the schedule.
Step on.
You speak to the microphone. This one's not working. Two, one. There you go. Yeah.
Use this one.
Use this one. As to D3, the appointment of professionals ordinarily discussed in closed session. That's correct. You wouldn't necessarily discuss this particular individual in open, but you could discuss the prospect of whether you want to use a grant right now. That's a different issue.
Well, I'm just curious, because like I understand that obviously our employees would have to be riced and you know, we would have to discuss in personnel, but this is an outside person being suggested to come in that is not a current Board of Education member, so I don't know how they have the same rights as a current employee, that's the first thing. The second thing I'd like to know is, because this particular bid is above, or this particular salary looks like above bid threshold, should this not have gone out for an RFQ and then an RFP?
It's not above bid threshold.
It's not? I thought it was 29.
It's 40. It's way up place.
It went up, okay.
Secondly, I thought the board, we do not necessarily hire people, we work, act on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. He brings forth names to us.
Right.
We don't give him the name.
Yeah, that's, that's the whole thing with the personnel committee, it's upon, if you read any resolution, it's upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. So we act upon the recommendation of our superintendent. I'm not seeing a recommendation here in the resolution.
Question?
Well, is there a reason why there isn't one? Or is this not the place to discuss that?
I knew nothing about this.
Okay, so, all right. So it has to be upon your recommendation, that's the way I understand, because I'm a member of the personnel committee, you review and you advise, and we as a personnel committee, we members of the personnel committee, discuss, ask questions, oftentimes it's two, three hours in a closed session. This is not upon your recommendation, is it?
This was not given.
Okay, thank you.
President Braddock?
Yes, trustee.
Just, I'm sorry, just to give some background, I have often asked the question, particularly of Dr. Dagnan, as to grant writing and who does it. A lot of these services are easily secured for free if you go to various educational websites, but department directors, everybody participates. So to kind of suck it out of the general area of where it is now and kind of isolate it to a person, I don't know. Again, it would be your recommendation first.
Can I, trustee? Can I make a, before this resolution is even discussed, I'd like to make a motion that it be thrown out or tabled or whatever, because... that it be thrown out or tabled or whatever, because hiring someone that is not the recommendation of the superintendent of the Bay on Public Schools doesn't seem like it belongs on this agenda. So I move that we table it or scrap it or whatever terminology you like to use.
Joe, if I might add, in agreement with Mr. Trustee.
Mr. Chris?
I'll answer to whatever you want.
I would tend to think an RFP would be appropriate. Not only that, the secondary thing is that the superintendent did not make that recommendation. And third, the same individual is, if I'm correct, according to the name on this, was the campaign manager for one of the trustees. So I think there's a conflict there as well.
I agree.
Duly noted.
Well, duly noted, but that being said, I still, I think we, we have a motion on the floor. I think it should be removed from agenda if, if that's the proper procedure.
Just, there's something I'd like to clarify if I can, President. The, I don't think the resolution is clear as to whether this person's being hired as an employee, which would be a recommendation from the superintendent, or a professional, which really would be for the board to decide discretion. Irrespective, you can table it, clean it up, discuss it, whether you want a grant writer or not, but.
Well, maybe. My intention definitely was just like our medical inspectors and not an employee. So, but, I mean, if, if you would like to.
Unfortunately, if you're paid. Are you not an employee?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily?
Or consultants, I guess, as well.
Well, well, I have it. There's, there's a, there's a very nebulous area there. An employee, do you get benefits and all that stuff? He's being paid out of the Board of Education funds. To me, in my very simple way of thinking, he's an employee, and I prefer that, that recommendation come from the superintendent of schools.
I agree.
Maybe, trustee Alonso, if I could, maybe you could give us a reason while, I see there's like around six of these, why they all happened since our committee meetings, which were just last week. If there's a reason that all these came up at this time where we didn't get a chance to discuss any of these until tonight, maybe you can explain that to us.
Sure. Like I said, this is just the process. If you wanted to go to a committee, the motion is made and seconded and then referred to the committee, but this is step one according to our bylaws. We could also make a motion to change our bylaws if nobody's happy with this process. That's exactly what Dr. Maitre reminded us at the reorganization meeting. But if you want to put out a bid for a grant writer, I'm all for that because I think it's going to actually probably cost us more because grant writers charge us 10% of what they bring in. And with our situation, there's definitely companies out there, you know, you're not just talking about grants federally and government money, but there's significant companies that do invest in children and education and would definitely help us. I don't think, like trustee Desmond said, that we would take grant writing away from other people that do it, but yet we would just add another layer on it, bringing more in. So, I mean, if we want to put out a bid and go with a percentage and pay people a percent of what, what they bring in, I mean, we could do that, and then they'll earn their keep, but it'll cost us more.
Do we have a resume?
Trustee Desmond.
Well, at this point in time, I think it's redundant because there are other people doing it. And I would like to add, because I'm looking at someone who just made me think of something, but the former superintendent, Mrs. McGahn, Dr. McGahn, actually worked with community groups and brought in tons of money, tens of thousands, and over a period of time, I'm sure we reached a million-dollar mark or more of collaborating with community people and bringing money in. So there's lots of ways that doesn't employ another person.
Plus, we all agree we were not hiring new positions. We were only replacing.
So we're on the situation of whether we should table this or not, though.
Table?
I made a motion previously to table it. I still haven't got a vote on my motion.
No, you didn't say it officially.
Yes, I did.
No, I moved to.
I did.
She did.
I did.
He did. Turn to hearing.
No, I, I did several times. It seems like nobody.
I second.
There you go, two seconds.
She did, I'm sorry.
I don't know.
So how do we go about that, Doc?
I'm looking at the attorney.
If you, if you discussed it and you want to table it at this point, you can table it. I don't think you need to make a motion. You can just move on to the next topic.
Okay.
We're going to table it for how long, Mr. President? Because I don't, I don't think you can.
Well, it'd have to be to our next, I guess, our workshops.
Well, one of the. Am I being asked to put these on for the February, well, put this on for the February committee meeting? Is that what you're asking me to do?
You send it to the committee.
It would, it would be appropriate to just have a committee consider them and make a recommendation.
That would sound good.
I agree.
Okay, so D3 is going to committee.
Well, I would just.
Do we want to take these?
Mr. President suggests that they all go to the committees.
Shouldn't they all go to the appropriate committees then?
Generally, where they're not.
That's what you would want.
Yeah, that's, that's what I want, too. Like I said, I only have to bring it up here today because of the bylaws for procedural purposes, but I'm all for bringing it to the proper committee.
So the board is directing me to take D.
So we'll table all these resolutions to the proper committees.
D3, D4, D5, D6, D7, D8. I'll redo the resolutions with February in place, and they'll be on the packets following the committee meeting.
One second. Trustee Desmond has one last.
It might not be my last. The point is, frankly, it's working with your colleagues and having dialogue during committee when you have a, something sparks a thought or whatever. It, it, it doesn't need to be a formal process until it's ready to be a resolution. So if you have thoughts and ideas, the committee meetings are where we initiate them and start talking, formulate something. I mean, there's things that have come out of curriculum tonight that I didn't, I wasn't actually on my radar until it was mentioned because they collaborated. So we need to collaborate in committee. If there's a need for a resolution, we then turn to the president and the attorney and the board secretary, and they formulate the appropriate resolution. We make a recommendation. It didn't have to, it didn't have to come here this way. Well, I disagree. No, no, I disagree with what you were told. I understand because, but that was okay for the one resolution that you promoted from the dais, but the other stuff wasn't even part of that. So I, I think we need to collaborate more in committee and, and work it that way. That's all.
I'd like to discuss some of these, but I guess.
But I, I think.
You will, in committee.
And I'll, I'll repeat, I think, one of the things that trustee Alonso did bring up. Do we want to review our policy and, as Mitch said, bring it, bring it up to date?
Yes.
So I, I would say when we get to committee in February, Laura and I will, will have that, and you guys can make suggestions on how you want to go about rewriting policy.
It wasn't, it doesn't.
It was not. There is a process, and we do it every year, and Laura painstakingly puts together the policies and lots of paper that we all review, and it's not at your committee, and then, again, recommendations made. There are things that are mandated that we just have to change, but all of the policies are presented to us like this, and we review them, and anything, that's a time to make recommendations, too, and that time is coming.
I thought we already did that. Was that not done in the reorg meeting in January, that we reviewed our policies and procedures, and we agreed and we voted to accept them? Was that not done?
One, another comment. I think it's hard. No, I agree, but.
It was not.
I agree, but here's, here's the unfortunate circumstances with.
No, but I mean, part of that, part of that was. Here's my issue. Making me do this.
Is Mary Jane Desmond sent to talk, ladies and gentlemen?
Thank you. Here's the unfortunate circumstances. When you come in new on January, whatever, you haven't been here to do that. So with all due respect, you should get those things reviewed and make whatever kind of recommendations in committee or to the committee. But it's very hard to be sworn in and hit the ground running that day. That's the problem I have with reorg meetings.
Plus, my, my problem, my problem with many of these resolutions, again, is that the superintendent of schools hasn't even had the opportunity to review them, and it's my understanding, Mitch, that the superintendent controls the agenda, correct, for the meeting?
It's the president, actually.
The president, right. Okay, so the president.
Well, I didn't really have a chance.
Right, and neither did the president, and, you know, some of these.
It's another collaboration right there.
And some of these are not even under the board, under the board preview, privy. I mean, apparently, someone doesn't understand the basic concept of municipal taxation, so I'm not, I mean, I don't even understand why some of these are on here if literally the president nor the superintendent has had the opportunity to look at them.
Well, that's, that's the point.
Because our bylaws say it. If you want to make a motion and bring up the bylaw and amend it, we should do that then. But your bylaws that you voted on at the last meeting say to bring up motions at the workshop, then they go to the meeting, and if the president or the board wants to, they want to put it in the committee, but we already agreed on that. So let's just have it all go to the committee.
And as I'll remind the board, as we have tonight with A1, at any time during the year, we make revisions and changes to our bylaws and policy. There's no reason why we cannot address this in February in committee and decide if we want to change the existing policy. I think that would be the easiest thing to do.
Thank you.
Well done.
At this time, anybody? Dr. Maitre, trustee Finnerty, to get back to your question. I misspoke. It's not electric, it's telecommunications, it's internet, and a large portion of it is also our liability insurance and that other purchaser. Okay? I said electric, but I meant the internet service, the tele, the phone systems, things of that nature that tie into it. Okay? I'm sorry. At this time, we're going to turn to a closed session for legal personnel negotiation items. It is 7:42. The board will return.